Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the Town Council Candidates Forum. My name is Shannon Curtin, and I am the President of the Junior Women's Club of Verona. The Junior Women's Club is a versatile organization that has been involved in social and charitable work in the community since our inception in 1926. Each year, our over sixty active members work with Verona's local government, businesses, schools, and community members on over twenty projects and initiatives which directly benefit our town. If you would like to learn more about how you can become a member of the Verona Juniors, please check out our website at www.juniorss.org, or follow us on social media on Facebook and Instagram @VeronaJuniors. Our club is honored to be hosting this forum on behalf of our community. I feel fortunate to live in a town whose residents are engaged and passionate about local issues. Our club thanks the community for their thoughtful and smart questions. There are many people that I need to thank who have made this forum possible. First off, my fellow juniors. There is a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes that make events like these possible, and I could not have done it without the support of the members of our club, especially Amanda Mioli, Yvonne Nolan, Robin Casella, and Katherine Kevrasaroff. I'd like to thank Kathy Kazan from the League of Women Voters in Wayne for moderating our event and her guidance. I'd like to thank our timekeeper, Donna Ward, and the members of the League of Women Voters of Montclair for all of their assistance planning this event. Thank you to Jennifer Kiernan, our municipal town clerk, and Steve Neal, Director of Administration and Economic Development, who are always big supporters of the juniors and instrumental in all of the events that we run. I would like to thank the Township of Verona for allowing us to use their Zoom account to host tonight's event. And thank you to Dan Valentine for assisting behind the scenes. Up next, I'd like to introduce our moderator, Kathy Kazan. Thank you for being with us, Kathy.
Thank you, Shannon. My name is Kathy Kazan, and I'm a board member from the Wayne League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan political organization, encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Education and voting are core concerns for the League. We are committed to providing fact-based information about issues and the positions candidates take on those issues to help voters make their own decisions and participate in the electoral process. The League never supports or opposes candidates for office or political parties. Any use of the League name or a footage from this forum in campaign materials, literature, or advertising of any kind, including internet, cable, or television, has not been authorized by the League of Women Voters. There are five candidates vying for three seats on the Verona Council. Let me introduce them. Cynthia Holland, Jason Hindman, Jack McAvoy, Michael Nochumson, and Christopher Tamboro. Each candidate, as determined by coin toss, will give a one-minute thirty-second opening statement in reverse or alphabetical order. Candidates will then have one minute thirty seconds to answer questions from the community. The timekeeper will signal one minute thirty seconds and read for stop. We will then conclude with two-minute closing statements in the opposite order of the openings, followed by closing remarks and important election information. The coin toss determined the opening will be in reverse order. Let us begin. Our first opening will be Christopher Tamboro.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening, everyone. First, thank you to the Junior Women's Club and the League of Women Voters for hosting and moderating the forum tonight, and to the juniors for their ongoing support of the community. As a rescue squad member, we've received a lot of support from the juniors, and I can't thank them enough. And thank you to my fellow candidates for being here for a second forum. As a teacher for thirteen years in Verona, a resident for eleven, ten as a renter, and the last, fortunately, as a homeowner. I was a rescue squad member, as a deputy emergency management coordinator, member of boards. My campaign chair has said, "You're all in for Verona." And I think that's a great description. Even though I've had that experience, I've learned a lot about the town in the past couple months, going door-to-door, learning about the community, talking to people, hearing issues. I believe in representation, reaching out to voters before they have to come to us. It's been great going door-to-door. I hope that you'll see throughout the debate that I'm a consensus builder who understands the common interests of the folks in Verona, and that I can engage the community in strategic planning and citizen activism. Thank you.
Mr. Nochumson.
Good evening, Verona, and I wanted to thank the League and the Verona Juniors for hosting this wonderful event this evening. I want to say hello to everyone out there in Verona who's tuned in tonight. Thank you for caring, and thank you for watching. Twenty years ago, we, my wife Kimberly and I, moved to Verona with our two daughters Molly and Abigail Nochumson. We moved here to buy a home and make an investment and start a family and raise our daughters in a school system that occupied the neighborhood which is where we were going to live. Kimberly is a kindergarten teacher in the Lanning District. She is loved, and she loves what she does and has loved in return. Our daughters went to Forest Avenue School, H.B. Whitehorn, and the high school, and are now in college. We are so excited for the fact that our daughters stayed in one school system their entire childhood. My wife and I have donated and dedicated our lives to volunteering for this town, whether it's within schools, whether it's coaching. Kimberly was a troop leader for Brownies, Daisies, and Girl Scouts. I've coached girls' basketball and softball for ten seasons over the course of the last twenty years. We enjoy this town immensely. We want to continue the tradition and the history that makes this town so special, and we want to continue to give back and improve what we see is a downtown that needs a facelift, but a downtown that is in need of some love, and we look.
That's your time, Mr. Nochumson. Okay, thank you. Mr. McAvoy.
Good evening, evening, and thanks to the Verona Junior Women's and the League of Women's Voters, Kathy, you, for taking an active role in our election and hosting this forum. My name is Jack McAvoy. I'm a lifelong resident, and I'm a licensed home inspector who became active in Verona government about ten years ago when an ill-suited development was proposed. It informed me that Verona was severely lacking in ordinance that protect our environment, our homes, and therefore our residents. So after six years of attending meetings, I ran in 2017 for Town Council, and I'm serving currently as your mayor. During my term, a meaningful tree preservation ordinance and a new strict stormwater management ordinance was passed. But we can't stop there. We have to ensure enforcement of these protective ordinances that taken together will help to prevent more stress on our aging infrastructure, infrastructure that we need to repair and replace and help to mitigate flooding of our residences' homes. I want to keep Verona green and sustainable for our future generations and preserve our tree-lined streetscapes for a healthier community. Verona is an open, welcoming, and inclusive community. But we can do better, and I think I can help. As council members, what we say and what we do matters. I will say I was the first mayor to fly the rainbow flag. I march with many of you for suicide prevention and the rally for justice, and I have strongly represented in words and actions that Verona will not tolerate hate, discrimination, or bias.
That's your time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hindman.
Thank you to the Verona Juniors, the League of Women Voters, and my fellow candidates. My name is Jason Hindman. I'm a Lanning dad, a member of the Verona Planning Board, and a land use and redevelopment attorney. When my wife Gina and I moved here four years ago, we fell in love with Verona's small-town charm and warm community. We knew Verona was the ideal place to raise our kids, Abby and Jax, and to one day make memories with future grandkids. Volunteering is a core value for Gina and I. That's why Gina is a Lanning-class parent and a volunteer advocate for foster children. That's why I've joined the planning board, and that's why I'm running for council. I believe that our council functions best when each member brings their unique set of skills and experiences. I believe that these perspectives will help us to collaboratively address major issues, current issues like our expiring master plan and state mandates for affordable housing. They'll have an lasting impact on future generations, and we can't bury our heads in the sand and hope things will work out. We have to be realistic and proactive if we want to preserve the things that make Verona great and improve areas where we're lagging. I want to make sure that Verona residents have control in the decision-making process, not connected redevelopers. I want our town to take on greener practices, to be safer for walking and biking, and to support our local businesses. I have a skill set to move Verona forward in a smart, strategic, and environmentally sustainable way that respects Verona's history and charm. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Holland.
Hi. Thank you, juniors. Thank you, LWV, and thank you, fellow candidates. I'm Cynthia Holland. I'm a local mom with two girls in the Forest Avenue School. I'm also an environmental and utility attorney. I have served under three governors and worked on four statewide energy master plans. I've chaired important committees for the New Jersey State Bar Association, and I've descended billion-dollar budgets. I'm offering experienced leadership for a better Verona, and I think we can achieve this by taking proactive steps to plan for our future, updating our master plan, designing asset management plans for our aging infrastructure, and designing community energy plans. We can take sustainable action by ensuring ordinances mitigate for environmental risks and address our aging infrastructure in strategic and cost-effective ways, really taking advantage of available state and federal funding. And third, I really think that we can strengthen our community coming out of COVID. And we can do that by expanding communication, providing opportunities for social and economic growth while maintaining what makes Verona a wonderful place, where we're neighbors. And I serve on two Girl Scout troops, and I volunteered at the schools, and oftentimes hosted family ministries at OLL. We've seen each other, and I'm really excited about this forum this evening, and I'm looking forward to speaking to you all further. Thank you.
Okay, let's get to our first question. What is the single greatest issue impacting the growth of our downtown, and how would you address it? What are your visions for a vibrant downtown Verona? First, Mr. Tamboro.
Thank you. The single greatest issue that affects our downtown is the fact that a lot of people go out of town for goods and services. So Verona has some amazing stores and services that are here. Throughout the summer, I walked every street of Verona with my dog Radar. I tripped over a sidewalk, ran across every crossing place that I could, and got to see a lot of the stores that I had just driven by for a long time. So one of the chief things I would like to do is conduct market research and find out the goods and services for which people are leaving Verona and going to other towns, and taking that information and provide it to landlords, prospective business owners, and to realtors so that they can bring those businesses in. Because the more businesses we have, the more people will come, and the more people will shop in Verona and take their services in Verona. In addition, we need to have a business directory that explains, because I wouldn't have known all of the things in town had I not walked by. And we can do that in an app, develop something to help all the businesses. It could be to attract business that we have a townwide gift card that people can use, like malls, that we can keep people in Verona. People can give each other that gift while supporting our community. And we need to put parking. And I'd like to engage in strategic public-private partnerships in order to open parking for more visitors. Thank you.
Mr. Nochumson, same question.
Fantastic question. We, in Verona, have a wonderful downtown that is unfortunately very tired. We have great anchor stores that we can talk about, restaurants like Eight Hills or Mealy's, Frank Anthony's, or Clinton Glass. But we have people who are doing business on the avenue, but the avenue has never been updated. My plan is an investment immediately, where we are investing year in and year out to do exciting things to beautify the downtown, to make it more exciting, to give it a facelift. So my exciting opportunity is to create a parking garage so that we can park in Verona and then begin to walk and stroll and roll the avenue. We can eat Verona. We can shop Verona, but we can enjoy Verona. We also have to create a walkway and a sidewalk that marries our beautiful Verona Park, which is a county park, with our downtown. And so in cooperation and collaboration with the county, creating a pathway or a walkway that allows for safe pedestrian crossing onto the avenue. I'm talking about seasonal banners that are changed. We're talking about walking and rolling Verona. As I mentioned, we're talking about a four-phase clock in the downtown, and we're talking about subtle lighting to light up our town square at night so that it attracts attention when people drive through the town, and it will attract businesses in the future. Thank you.
Mr. McAvoy, same question.
To me, the single greatest issue, in my opinion, is parking, and it's an issue that's discussed weekly, if not daily, in this town. Parking is a major issue. We do try to address parking, sharing ideas such as banks by day and restaurants by night. We did evaluate our side streets, striping them for more defined parking spaces, therefore adding additional spaces. Another idea is possible discounts or specials with chamber members or all-store owners so that residents have incentives for walking to dinner and walk to shop, freeing up parking for additional customers. My vision for a vibrant downtown, I think I would continue to increase the Chamber of Commerce membership. I think we need more night and weekend events to entice people to go down there, tax incentives to be able to improve building facades, lending to a more cohesive and attractive downtown appearance. So many years ago, Verona had a supermarket where Walgreens was currently, and it was very upsetting when they left, with the potential for mixed-use development on the avenue by where the Learning Express is. I would love to see the current farmer's market store expand and have kiosks for like a butcher or a baker where our residents could do one-stop shopping. I know years ago, we had a bowling alley. We had a movie theater. Although those may not be popular right now, there are other destination sites that Verona could attract to accommodate businesses downtown. Thank you.
Mr. Hindman.
Thank you. A vibrant downtown is a delicate balancing act for a small community, and Verona is particularly challenged because of the geography of Bloomfield Ave and the poor alignment of the intersecting streets. But the ultimate issue is the same for any town. A thriving business district needs a large enough customer base to support the businesses. Property owners and businesses are not going to make substantial long-term investments unless the customer base will be there to support it for the lifespan of the investment. If you want destination-driven businesses, you need to cater to cars. That's a land-intensive for parking and drop-offs, and we don't have the capacity right now. So that would mean acquiring land and building large parking garages like in Montclair. And based on what I've heard from residents knocking on doors, speaking to people, that's probably not feasible. If you want a local customer base that can walk, and you don't want three or more five-story mixed-use redevelopment projects on Bloomfield Ave, you have to take a comprehensive approach to organically and gradually encourage residential growth within about a half a mile of the business district. And you have to actively plan for safe and efficient pedestrian and bike circulation to the business district from all corners of Verona. It takes comprehensive planning, and someone like myself with professional experience in this field who knows how to have these options studied and implemented in our master plan process. Thank you.
Ms. Holland.
Thank you. I actually don't think there's one single issue impacting downtown. And I say that because the question of supporting our downtown has been raised repeatedly throughout every election cycle over the last decade. It's a systemic issue that we cannot have corrected with a coat of paint or another Band-Aid fix. Rather, we have an opportunity with the master plan to take a truly intentional approach to our downtown. Do we want to be a restaurant destination? Let's plan for it. What do restaurants need? Do they need space for dining? Do we need to enhance our walkability? Let's zone for it. Further, no businesses benefit when water mains break and we have water shortages, like we did in Verona last summer. And no businesses benefit when Bloomfield Avenue is flooded out with even the most minor of rainstorms. Those are the systems that we really need to address, the aging infrastructure, to ensure that those crucial bones are sturdy enough to support the downtown that we want to build, the one that will make us a better Verona. Thank you.
Okay. Next question. What proactive strategies do you have to address the next round of negotiations that will minimize the fiscal impact as well as the risk of a builder's remedy suit while addressing the affordable housing need in a way that is equitable to those seeking housing and to the current residents? Please provide an overview of how the township should best prepare for the next round of state-mandated affordable housing, which starts in 2025. It's a little long, but I think we get it. Mr. Nochumson, you go first this time.
Well, another great question. It's unfortunate that there is a demand on all of the towns and cities in the state of New Jersey with this affordable housing obligation. Verona has met theirs, but is right now in the process of satisfying what they've agreed to with the courts. Unfortunately, Verona is a small town, and when you're trying to put a size-ten-foot into a size-six shoe, you have a real problem. So I've worked with, when I was on the council, we coordinated with Cameco and Jerry Pearl to put 100% affordable at the Cameco site, which was pretty amazing because it reduced the development throughout the town by 400 units. But I think there is a neat way or a creative way to look at our further obligation going forward, and it would be to convert existing apartment buildings into affordable apartment buildings with a payment to the owner of the apartment. So we're not creating new units. We're not converting single-family homes into two- and three-family homes to satisfy this, but we are taking existing apartments and converting them to affordable apartments by paying an upfront amount of money to the owner of the building. So this is a creative way to satisfy the obligation without building or creating more confusion or more congestion in Verona. So to me, that's common sense, and that's very doable.
Mr. McAvoy, same question.
I'd say we began preparing for our next round in 2018 by adopting our set-aside ordinance. It basically says that ordinance that if you create five or more units, you need one required to be an affordable unit. And that means it's registered with the county, and it is deed-restricted for 30 years as an affordable unit in Verona. So that when we create more housing, we do it in areas that are appropriate on the main avenue and in step with our set-aside requirement. This is extremely important because while there are ideas of converting single-family homes into two-, three-, and four-family units, that does not create affordable units whatsoever. It does, however, add to our inventory of market-rate units, leaving us vulnerable to additional interveners and builders' remedy suits in the future. Let's say a fair share calls for 20 affordable units in 2025. That set-aside could allow us to put a 100-unit or more building in town. Aiding density in our single-family neighborhoods would also necessitate expanding height allowances for taller homes, paving yards for parking, introducing more traffic to our residential streets, or putting more stress on our fragile infrastructure at all levels, our stormwater, our streets, our schools, our emergency services. The tax ramifications of a paid full-time fire department or rescue squad or school additions would be very high. And at the end of the day, this helps no one except for the developer, who will be delighted in 2025. We are already overdeveloped in Verona, and.
That's your time.
Concentrate in the right spots. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hindman, same question.
If elected to council, I'd be the only council person with firsthand experience navigating affordable compliance in court because I do it for a living, and I do it for other towns. I think some of the other candidates are severely underestimating the likely number of units that would be required the next round and don't have a full understanding of the COA accrediting process. If that census data just came out, New Jersey's population is up 5.7%, and that's going to impact what the ultimate obligation is going to be. So we have to be realistic and proactive if we want to preserve the things that make Verona great. That's why I'm proposing a comprehensive approach to compliance and highlighting the tools and methods that are available, but often overlooked. Tools like allowing owners to convert to two- to four-unit homes in certain areas or direct rental subsidies to existing eligible residents, permitting auxiliary dwelling units in certain areas, a housing rehabilitation and grant program. I want to use all of these tools, and they actually do create COA credits if you have an approved Affordable Trust Fund and spending plan. And that's what I want to incorporate into future settlements. No one's solution is going to be a silver bullet, so we have to have this range of options so that when time comes to act, we can take parts of each and achieve the total number of units that we need and then be able to defend against developers intervening because we have the mechanisms in place. This diversified approach also has the benefit of fostering a melting pot type of community. Thank you.
Ms. Holland.
Thank you. I believe that we can prepare for the next round and avoid further threat of legal action with proactive planning and action, starting with our municipal master plan. And so we must project into the future and ensure that we're capable of complying with future obligations, even before we know with all certainty what those are. We, the citizens of Verona, have an opportunity in the master plan to ensure that future development is done in a way that comports with our environmental objectives, contributes to our schools, and avoids further traffic safety issues, and also complements our existing neighborhoods. I'm glad that the township has finally initiated the master plan process with a competitive request for proposals from consultants. And the RFP must be well-written and solicit the qualifications necessary to get the plan done correctly. As I said at the council meeting, I'm optimistic that the planning board will hire a consultant with both housing and environmental expertise to ensure that we get the best results because this is really important to the long-term future of our children and our families and our community at large. And I really think it's important to get it right. Thank you.
Mr. Tamboro.
Thank you. Before we do anything else, we need to make sure that we meet the needs of our current residents. We purchased homes. We moved into this town to make sure that we lived in a community that was beautiful, that had the character that we were looking for, and we've invested into this. We have our obligations that we must meet. However, we can do that in a manner that maintains that character. We need to avoid high-density structures in residential zones, in buffer zones. We need to make sure that, and I agree with Mayor McAvoy's analysis, that we need to make sure that if we're actually bringing units in, that they are affordable. We need to bring in the best experts. In reading planning reports of late, there is a very clear difference between the level of competency of a lot of the experts that we have. Every professional services contract needs to be reviewed to make sure we're bringing the right people in. But the reality of it is, this is a legislative problem. And Verona needs to take the lead, working with other towns in our area that are also facing the same type of issues. Form coalitions and start lobbying the state legislature to change the law so that we're not finding towns that are in this position. We need to be heard on the state. We need to be heard on the state level. Right now, we're kind of on the outer edge of Legislative District 26, and we need to make sure that our assembly members and our senator aren't just coming here for pasta dinners and pancake breakfasts, but they're coming here to represent us. We need to lobby, we need to get together, and we need to get a solution so we don't have to keep addressing this issue internally. Thank you.
Okay. Next question. Somewhat similar, but listen carefully. Verona was one of the last towns to settle with fair share housing in the current round of affordable housing negotiations under the current Mount Laurel regulatory framework. While the town was able to significantly reduce the obligation, it came with a large fiscal impact and almost cost Verona its immunity from builders' remedy lawsuits. Are any of you willing to explore a challenge to the builders' remedy component of affordable housing law in New Jersey? If so, how would you approach such a challenge? We will begin with Mr. McAvoy.
I think Verona and so many towns have undergone extensive expense and undue stress to accommodate excessive development. Let's be honest, developers aren't excited to come into your town and build affordable housing. They are excited to create a building with 80% to 85% market rate units at the expense of providing their 15% to 20% affordable portion. This ratio is untenable, but developers have lobbied the state claiming that providing more than 20% ratio would make their projects too costly and not physically feasible and not profitable. So at the end of the day, the developers are profiting and the communities are getting hurt, becoming vastly overdeveloped and paying for infrastructural upgrades that only became necessary due to the new developments and so that a developer could make a profit. I am all for exploring and implementing a challenge to the builders' remedy component, but it will require getting together with other municipalities. Like Mr. Tamboro said, we need to do this together and lobby our representatives to reduce the stress on towns. No one is getting affordable against affordable housing in our town, but the 20% ratio is untenable because it allows for oversized buildings and undersized properties and doesn't consider specific challenges of a town like our school capacity, our water utility, flooding issues, or even our emergency services. This is, this approach has to change, and I need to reach out to other council members in other communities to discuss our options.
Mr. Heineman, same question.
Thank you. So I just want to clarify the question a bit. It was specifically about the builders' remedy. While I'm all in favor of working with other towns to lobby our state representatives for comprehensive reform of the Fair Housing Act, the COA regulations, and the COA system with respect to the idea about attacking the builders' remedy, that idea has been attempted in the past, and it's failed. This gets brought up all the time in my, when I'm dealing with other towns. Residents want to always find out what we can do about the builders' remedy, and there really isn't because it was either Mount Laurel II or III where the Supreme Court specifically addressed whether the builders' remedy should be limited, and the court outright rejected it. Affordable housing is a long-established constitutional prerequisite to a municipality's ability to provide zoning regulations. So it's unrealistic to think that the court's going to limit the builders' remedy because without it, few towns would comply. And any limitations by the state legislature that were too substantial would probably get overturned by the court because it is a constitutionally created remedy by the courts. And the court's not going to leave it to towns to police themselves, so, and they're not going to leave it up to the state, especially given COA's track record. So with my remaining time, I want to address something about my proposal related to two- to four-unit conversions and the idea that it would substantially change the neighborhood. That's not the case. When we look at two- to four-unit conversions, we're talking about the use and the occupancy, not the building en masse. And a great example is you look where those units already exist, and it's perfectly compatible with the existing built environment.
Ms. Holland.
I think it's important, if you're talking about challenging the builders' remedy, that you look at your two paths forward. First of all, the builders' remedy is a judicial creation that was created by the courts. So if you're going to challenge it, where are you challenging it? You're going to the courts. Do you think that you're going to change the judiciary's mind? Do you think Verona and a couple of our neighboring towns are going to change that? Or is it more likely that we're embroiling ourselves in further divisive, costly litigation that's going to be spending our limited resources and embroiling us in acrimony when we could be proactively working on a positive solution for our community? The alternative path forward is with legislation, and I've heard some other candidates talk about that. But let's recognize the fact that legislation has been proposed three times. In 2017, Assemblywoman Decroche co-sponsored a bill to address the builders' remedy. She re-proposed it in 2018. It sat. She re-proposed it again in 2020, and it's still there in committee. It has consistently died in committee. So this has been tried, and it's not succeeding. What is more effective is proactively taking positive steps for your community and planning for affordable housing units and the realistic opportunity for them to be incorporated into your community. Thank you.
Mr. Tamboro.
So once again, in reference to what I was speaking before, I definitely think we need a legislative solution to this. And I understand Assemblywoman Decroche has put this through a couple of times. She is an LD 26 representative. However, why do bills fail in committee? Because they don't have the backing of the rest of the legislators in the state. So they need backing from throughout the state. We need to harness the power of the League of Municipalities. We need to make them lobby for us. We are paying dues for those organizations. I'm an advocate, and I'm an organizer, and these are things that we absolutely can do by engaging through communication mechanisms. If the court system is engaging in a constitutional argument about this, then what should we be doing? We have the ability, in the state of New Jersey, to put a referendum on the ballot to change the language of the Constitution. We did it recently with the legalization of marijuana. So the legislature has the ability, therefore, to propose that as well, but they're not going to do it until the public demands it. And this is an issue that I think Verona is becoming very well-educated in, and I compliment all of the other candidates for their expertise and their desire to learn more about this. But most places aren't learning about it until they see it affect their community. Essex Fells may not care about it because right there, those townhouses on Essex Fells are basically their affordable housing. On Bloomfield Avenue, it's very different than what we're facing. But we can join together, we can notice the places that are seeing this, and we can advocate. Thank you.
Mr. Knockumson.
Thank you very much. The whole affordable housing issue is not being looked at uniquely when we look at Verona versus Cedar Grove versus other towns. I think everyone on this call would agree that we're generally overdeveloped. The affordable housing obligation is a forced development onto a township, which most towns would prefer not to have. And when you force development, you get development that is poor. It's in the wrong areas. There's never any consideration for the infrastructure above ground or underground. But I think we really have to take a pause after we satisfy this round, and I think common sense would tell us to invite the courts, invite the judge to this town, and give them a tour of what this town is all about. Give them an idea what our school systems are like and what capacity we have left. Show them some of our parks. Show them what's available because we're looking to build on steep slopes, we're looking to build in environmental areas. And at some point, even if there's an obligation, when you look at a town and it's overdeveloped, the courts may understand that this town has no capacity left. So I think visiting or having someone visit this town and looking at it uniquely at the square mileage and the boundaries may change things, but we can't be forced into development that will destroy the town in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Next question. How do you plan to address the high traffic volume and speed and limited visibility to ensure a more walkable, bikeable town for every Verona resident? What tangible ideas do you have for traffic safety? With that in mind, what do you feel Verona should do to better address this issue? Going first would be Mr. Heineman.
Thank you. So in addressing the traffic needs of the community, we have to first look at the master plan, and there is a traffic and circulation element that is a key component of it. I would push for a comprehensive audit of our road system so that we can plan for safe and efficient pedestrian and bike circulation to the business district from all corners of Verona, as well as other focal points in the town, such as our neighborhood elementary schools. Once those areas for pedestrian and bike corridors to the community focal points were mapped, we can employ a complete streets strategy, you know, widening sidewalks, incorporating buffers between sidewalks and streets, replacing on-street parking in certain areas to support bike lanes, and requiring scheduled road maintenance projects to include pedestrian crosswalks and other safety devices. We can also slow traffic and make our streets safer through traffic calming striping and permitting citizen art projects for intersection murals, similar to what you've seen in Montclair and some other municipalities. On major intersections, I'd like to see pedestrian bumpouts at crosswalks, bumpouts that also serve as vegetative bioswells. This serves as a three-part function of beautification, stormwater retention, and increased pedestrian visibility and protection. But again, all of these different ideas have to be part of a comprehensive planning process where the appropriate locations and implementations are fully vetted.
Ms. Holland. Same question.
Thank you. Living in the southwest quadrant, traffic safety is a particular concern. Our area is very walkable to the downtown and to Verona Park, and yet, to get to both of those, you're coming to Bloomfield Avenue and crossing Lakeside, which often means you're taking your life in your own hands. My daughters ride their bikes throughout the area, and I'm constantly stressed that somebody is not going to pay attention coming down the steep hill on South Prospect Street and ultimately hit one of my children. These were areas that were identified as problems in the 2009 master plan, and they have yet to be addressed, aside from some yield signs on South Prospect Street. We do have a couple of new stop signs on Forest Avenue, but, and please, excuse me, but there's also a tremendous amount of traffic safety concerns still in the area. So as we begin this new master plan process, I really do hope that we have an experienced consultant that will formulate a very thoughtful and detailed traffic circulation plan. And if these same areas are identified, which I suspect they will be, I really would like us to take a very intentional approach in the master plan with short, medium, and long-term goals for realizing the changes that are recommended. Because having recommendations in the master plan without a plan to realize them just means that we're making wishes, and that's not helpful to our community, and that doesn't make more families want to live here. So overall, I think if we take a more intentional approach, we will achieve what we seek. Thank you.
Mr. Tamboro.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Heineman and Ms. Holland on all of their suggestions. I've had the opportunity to speak with a lot of residents, especially about this issue. I've had the opportunity to experience it, walking my dog throughout the streets of Verona, understanding the sidewalks. The folks feed on Bloomfield Avenue, going from, as soon as you hit from Lakeside, and they're heading down to Pompkin Avenue. I have to cross at Brookdale Avenue, and even with a strobing flashlight, it's, I'm still a target. So, and I put myself between the dog and the car potentially, right? So we have to do things. These are things we have experienced. We can have some really smart pedestrian warning devices, like Montclair has done. We can really improve the sidewalks. We can light things better. We can work with the county to have a better traffic light system, right? These are county roads. Bloomfield Avenue, Road, Fairview Avenue, Pompkin Avenue is a state road. We have to lobby the county. 20% of our tax dollars go to Essex County. We need to make sure we're getting our money's worth out of those tax dollars, right? But this can all be part of our master plan and a strategic plan. Both of these things can involve community input. And on my website, my plan exists there for strategic planning, and one of the committees is traffic safety. We need to make sure in pedestrian safety. We must make sure that we're doing this and that we get interested individuals on the committee to communicate their concerns because none of us can experience a reissue. Thank you.
Mr. Knockumson.
Thank you. I think everyone would agree that slowing traffic benefits everyone, and Bloomfield Avenue, without a doubt, is our number-one issue. The speeding and the traffic and the congestion on a continuous basis is difficult for us to maneuver to schools, to work. Anyone who's trying to drive the avenue in the morning, it's more like a parking lot than a road. My suggestion is, first of all, to invest in our downtown, to cooperate with the county and collaborate with the county to re-engineer Bloomfield Avenue, very similar to the way the county worked with Cedar Grove on 23. Get a beautiful job restriping, going from one lane to two lanes. They have turning lanes, and we need to do that on Bloomfield Avenue. We could possibly also bump out the sidewalks to create more space for walking. You could create bike lanes on the avenue with a parking deck behind the old Terry's. We can also adjust and move all parking to behind Terry's and possibly free up the parking lanes on the left and right side of Bloomfield Avenue. But there are opportunities to do this if we invest in our downtown and we really make an effort to create a slower, more walkable, and beautiful downtown for not only the neighborhoods, but for safety and for the businesses, and really for the entire Verona experience. Slowing traffic and more opportunities makes it a better community. Thank you.
Mr. McAvoy.
Thank you. I believe we should always be proactive and do better when it comes to our traffic issues. And because we are so densely populated here, this is always a challenge. I know a couple of years ago, bike lanes were explored, and although it's still a topic of discussion, we likely lose much-needed parking near the schools and near the town center if we put them in. I believe we are a walkable town, and with Verona Park at our center, this walkable destination invites pedestrians to stroll through town. I just signed a letter as the mayor of the township of Verona to the county to apply for a federal grant from the Transportation and Infrastructure Fundy Program for the reconstruction of Bloomfield Avenue from Newark all the way to Fairfield. If this happens, it will initiate traffic improvements to enhance motor vehicle and pedestrian safety and improve the flow of traffic on Bloomfield Avenue. Traffic light improvements on Bloomfield Avenue through Verona will also be conducted by the county in the upcoming year. I've been asked for a cross, I've been asking for the crosswalk at Verona Park for a long time, and I will continue. I also will be petitioning for more traffic calming devices, stop signs, traffic lights, crosswalks, whatever's needed to slow traffic down and make it safe for people. So I will, I mean, I know in the coming year or two, we're hitting new traffic lights in town at Fairview and Personette. There's definitely one going at Pompkin and Claremont Avenue. But I will just add lastly that in January, when we signed a new engineering company, one of their specialties is traffic safety and traffic engineering, and it was very important to the council when we signed.
That's your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Next question. How will you address the need for necessary sewer and water infrastructure updates, given that they will need a major influx of tax dollars in order to accommodate the increase in population due to the proposed changes and adding more multifamily housing in a redo of the master plan? Going first would be Ms. Holland.
Thank you. I'm proposing a comprehensive asset management plan, which is a well-recognized tool used by utilities. All repairs aren't done at once. It's incremental, which enables us to plan for cost-effective and efficient upgrades, minimizing the need for significant tax increases. I also propose utilizing available grants and financing from the state and federal government. New Jersey has a program for leak detection equipment for older suburban New Jersey has a program for leak-detection equipment for older suburban systems. Sounds like home. The Environmental Infrastructure Trust, aka The Water Bank, offers funding for asset management plans like Glen Ridge did and for wastewater facility upgrades like Chatham used to the tune of $5.5 million. We can do important infrastructure upgrades here in Verona in a cost-effective way. We just have to plan for it and make very smart decisions. And I know these programs, and I have experience working in these types of things through my career, and I can help. So thank you.
Mr. Tambura.
Thank you. So all of our infrastructure planning should be put into a strategic planning process where we look at what we want to achieve with specific goals and outcomes in five years, in 10 years, in 15 years. We need to get committees of people together in order to come up with desired outcomes that we can meet on a specific timetable. So that's incredibly important. We also have to rely on experts. We have to bring in the best possible experts we can. We need to review every possible professional services contract that we have to make sure that our people are the industry-leading experts in these areas. We have to invest in infrastructure now, because what we'll find, and anybody finds in a home, is if you don't take care of a problem right away, it gets more expensive to maintain. So the investment now, even if it incurs debt service to do it, is much less expensive than waiting for the problems to arise when they happen. Recently, the township increased sewer fees after adding Cedar Grove to the sewer system, the new development there. And that should hopefully add to some funds for the sewer plant. In addition, we have to minimize as much multifamily housing as possible. We have to minimize the addition of new units. All of this puts a strain on these programs, and it goes back to proper planning and advocacy for what we want Verona to look like, because there's a cost that is either tangible or intangible to everything. Thank you.
Mr. Knackumson.
Thank you very much. Running a town is very capital-intensive. And we know we have roads, we have sewers that we don't even see. We have catch basins underground that no one even thinks about. We have buildings, we have roofs, we have trucks, vehicles, cars, so many things. And the only way to prepare for these things, as a good homeowner does, is have a capital reserve for each of these line items each and every year. Whether you're buying a vehicle or doing a roof, you should be saving on a yearly basis so you have the money available when you need it, so nothing is unexpected. The expense is always a little more than we expect, but if you're prepared, we know these expenses happen, we know we're doing roads. We certainly know our sewer lines are cracking underground, and we can line those with liners. But it's expensive, and unless we start saving today, we won't have money in the future, and then we're forced to bond and make more expensive payments. So it's like maintaining a deck at your house. If you maintain it, it's a lot less expensive to repair it because it's been maintained. So that's the same thing I've always advocated with the town. We have a centennial field that's nearing 15 years. I think we installed it in 2007. We need to begin to reserve to prepare for re-carpeting that field. That's going to be a half a million dollars. If you save $50,000 a year, after 15 years, you have plenty of money to reinstall a new carpet. So reserves are important, and it's responsible budgeting. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. McAvoy.
Well, first off, I'd say we don't know exactly what our new goals will be or what future development may result from the master plan reexamination. However, with the overlay that we created along the avenue, this can enhance our downtown while staying in step with the generally accepted fair share recommendations that for every five units we put in, one must be set aside for affordable. So the reexamination of the master plan will entail having our planner do an overall inventory of the entire township. You have to look into the population changes and shifts, housing unit numbers and type and demographics. The result of these studies inform us how to move forward. The question to me really is asking about how we finance these upgrades. The town actually acted proactively about three years ago by what Mr. Tambura said. We added a $25 a quarter fee to your utility bills to raise more revenue for the maintenance of these essential services. But for these large dollar issues, we will most likely have to be bonding for them. The water utility assessment will require, without any changes this year, about $5.8 million for replacement parts and building upgrades. So this doesn't even include the pipes in the ground or the road replacements that will be necessary. Nor does it look like this other essential maintenance throughout the rest of the town isn't included in this. So the money will have to come through bonding, and we'll probably be bundling a large capital projects together in order to achieve a lower interest rate on those bonds.
Okay. Mr. Hindman.
Thank you. So first, we have to recognize that our infrastructure will need investment and improvement, regardless of population increases. It'll need to be updated because some of our systems have exceeded their useful lifespan and need to be replaced regardless. On the issue of adding more multifamily units, as will be required by our affordable housing mandates, it's important that we take a comprehensive approach to our planning so that infrastructure investments can be coordinated with new construction and redevelopment. And it's also important to forecast and encourage the geographic areas that can support growth. That's why we need to incorporate smart growth planning and development into our master planning process, because it's actually cheaper in the long run on a per-unit basis in terms of infrastructure replacement to facilitate more efficient development around the town center. Spread-out sprawling development is actually much more expensive for infrastructure to install and replace. And this idea is consistent with what I've said in the past. As a town, we need to be promoting smart growth. And, you know, in the context of recent acquisitions for open space and proposals to destroy undeveloped wooded open space to build new single-family homes that are more land-intensive than other housing types and shift the burden of high-density development on other neighborhoods like Spectrum and Camico that are on the borders of town, those types of proposals will require more infrastructure capacity because we're spreading things out at the margins, and that's the opposite of smart growth.
Okay. Everyone got a chance to go first. That's our first five questions. We're halfway there. Next question. What are your thoughts on our future master plan? How will you factor in environmental impact and sustainability into policies that you will propose for Verona when elected to office? Mr. Tambura.
Thank you. I'm glad that Verona is at the time right now where we are creating a new master plan. The first thing that we must be doing is engaging deliberate citizen involvement in the planning process. The public can be involved in the master planning process, and the public should be involved in the master planning process. I've been hearing a lot from voters and residents going door-to-door about sustainability and environmental impact. We have to make sure that we are building in the right places. We have to make sure that we are working and that we are getting experts to have discussions over drainage in our neighborhoods. In Verona Park right now, as a result of some development, land that used to be able to walk on very easily, play soccer on, is now fields that are like marshes at some points when any rain comes in. So these are things that we all need to be looking at. A lot of us focus on new housing, but we already have some problems that exist already. And that's, those are things that we need to absolutely take care of. We can engage in practices through strategic planning, as well as the master plan, to use more environmentally-friendly materials to make sure that we have trees that are stopping water runoff, that we are engaging and following the ordinances that we already have that are there to protect our homes, that are there to protect our property, that are there to protect one another. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Knackumson.
Well, so the question was, what are we going to do as far as the master plan goes? And I would, as a non-expert, engage the experts. I would reach out to our planning board, because we certainly trust them. I would reach out to our zoning board, because we certainly have confidence in them. Our environmental commission, who we've, you know, designated in town. They certainly have the best interests of Verona in mind. Our town engineer, and then some outside experts, and bring them together to formulate what that master plan should be. I am no expert, but I certainly understand about getting experts and good people and quality people with knowledge around you to guide you so that Verona is in good hands. So I think it's an easy solution when you have quality people around you and you engage the residents who are on these boards and on these commissions and on these committees. So that's what I would do, and I would gather all that information, and we would be certainly transparent, and we would make a wise, responsible decision for our community moving forward. Because I believe everyone on this call and everyone who lives here only wants the best for the future of Verona. Thank you.
Mr. McAvoy.
Yes, to me, environmental is very important. Let me start by saying that over my term as mayor, we've passed a tree preservation ordinance, flood control and prevention ordinance, and finally, this past March, a strict stormwater management ordinance. A master plan reexamination entails the hiring of a professional planner to evaluate Verona's range and variety of its existing housing, the population changes, our utility facilities, and so much more. But the reexamination is not just a blueprint for the future of our development. It's also a blueprint for our town's conservation plan. The master plan includes sections of our environmental features on stormwater management. And in February of this year, a new climate change hazard vulnerability section was added. We will likely need to hire a new specialist who will be tasked with helping Verona complete this mandatory section and forecast the future hazards that our current and future township may encounter. After the evaluation, then we set our goals. But we do know that as of 2009, we were over 98% developed. And in my view, we need to strike a greater balance of sustainability with any new growth. With more flooding occurring in our town and more wetlands, as Mr. Tambura had said, we really need to discuss more restrictive development policies, especially in those vulnerable areas of town that experience repetitive flooding events. We need to protect those properties and homeowners, and we need to be proactive.
Mr. Hindman.
Properties to build on. Thank you.
Thank you. It's crucial that we get this master plan right. In my career, I've been involved with and had to litigate over various municipal master plans and plan updates. And the impact of climate change and increased storm risk have to be considered by law as part of the land use element. Additionally, there's an optional component for green buildings and environmental sustainability plan element that I would also want to see implemented. I want to use my experience in this field and the lessons that I've learned to take a forward-looking, comprehensive approach that includes smart growth. And for Verona, smart growth has the potential to make our streets safer for pedestrians and bikers, and that would reduce our traffic and our emissions. Smart growth would lead us to invest in greener, cleaner, safer infrastructure. And on the topic of putting our sustainable policy into practice, the role of the deliberative body is to bring expertise and perspectives from all areas so that we can leverage the collective wisdom. And if I'm on the council, I'm going to ensure that my decision-making is informed by an expert in the field like Cynthia Holland, who, you know, informed a lot of the people on the council about the availability of DEP involvement in this land use element to assist us in these climate change requirements. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Holland.
Flattered. I actually love this question because I'm an environmental and utility attorney. And it's also amazing to see the work that you've done be realized. And so when I was the chair of the Sustainable and Resilient Infrastructure Workgroup for the New Jersey Energy Master Plan, one of the things that we talked about was how to engage communities more and how to have them address climate change-related issues. And when we worked with DEP on the Global Warming Response Act report, we similarly really wanted municipalities engaged. So then when Senator Smith actually was able to get the legislation passed and Governor Murphy signed it, requiring municipalities to include in their master plans climate change-related vulnerabilities, I'm so pleased, because we here in Verona have those very vulnerabilities. We are between the two Ouachon Mountains, and another candidate has already referenced the swampiness around the Peckman River in Verona Park. We have the flooding issues in various parts of town. So there's an opportunity for us to really take an intentional and proactive approach in our master plan and to really achieve those 20, 30 goals. I expect the consultant selected by the planning board to have meaningful environmental chocks so that they can evaluate and help to advise our community in addressing these challenges going into the next decade. I also expect the master planning process to be complemented by the community energy planning and sustainable Verona's actions. Thank you.
Okay. Next question. The town recently voted to create an overlay zone between South Prospect and Montrose along Bloomfield that would allow for a mixed-use development of commercial and residential uses. Do you think this will be enough to satisfy the next round of fair share affordable housing in 2025? Why? And if not, what other proactive things can we do to ensure compliance and minimize high-density commercial multifamily development? Going first will be Mr. Knackumson.
Well, I think the overlay is a positive development because it shows that the council is thinking forward. But developing that into an affordable complex, I would use that as a backup. My goal would be to, again, approach owners of apartments in Verona that are three to five units or larger and look to convert those into affordable units with a payment upfront. Therefore, we have, we will satisfy the affordable obligation, and we won't have to do any force building. Because again, force building creates situations that you don't want to have. My focus would be building and developing the downtown for a better experience for our community, for improving walkability, rollability, and enjoyment for our community. But I do believe the overlay was a positive development, and it does protect Verona in the long run. Thank you very much.
Mr. McAvoy.
Thank you. Very close to the other question, but I would say the overlay zone is a great second step because it was drafted to give us an appropriate location for mixed use, where the creation of more housing will add to our affordable units through our first step in satisfying our next round, which was the set-aside ordinance. Set-aside ordinance really is something we look for to create the affordable housing in anticipation of what's going to go on in 2025. But basically, the overlay zone, the ordinance, excuse me, the set-aside ordinance, once again, it says that when five or more units are created, what is required to become an affordable unit? So that does mean that one of those units would be de-restricted and registered with the county, so it would stay affordable for 30 years in Verona. Now, this is important because with the overlay zone, they're doing mixed retail and residential. And what they're looking at down there is one-story retail, two stories residential. So any development down there is going to have more than five units. So any development in that area of town, in that block, will automatically have affordable housing units with the one-to-five set-aside that fair share housing requires. So it will help us in 2025, and that's why that overlay zone goes there. That's the appropriate place for development, and that's the appropriate place for our affordable housing, because it's close to mass transit and it's close to businesses, not on the side streets.
That's your time, Mr. McAvoy. Mr. Hindman.
Thank you. Thank you. So it's fair to say that I'm probably the only candidate here that's reviewed the 217-page court decision that established the methodology for calculating each municipality's affordable housing obligation through 2025. And the 215-unit obligation that Verona recently settled with Fair Share Housing Center for is the number that came from that decision. And just extrapolating our current obligation of 215 units to the next round over 10 years, it gives us an obligation of about 83 units. That's probably close to what our future obligation will be. But it could be anywhere from 50 to 120 affordable units. And that's because the obligation that Verona will have, it doesn't depend on just what is the existing environment in Verona. It depends on future census data, which I said that New Jersey went up 5.7% in population. It relies on existing economic data and the housing data for both the state and our own four-county region. And a vacant land adjustment, while important, doesn't get us out of the woods. The proposed overlay ordinance and the mandatory townwide set-aside ordinance, those are good starts. That's good planning, but that's not enough to make up the whole obligation that we're going to need. I mean, we're looking, if we just relied on a set-aside ordinance, we're looking at 200 to 300 additional market rate units. That's why I proposed the comprehensive plan that I outlined earlier.
Thank you. Ms. Holland.
So, full disclosure, I live on the South Prospect Street. And I commented on the zoning overlay at the council meeting. Zoning ordinances need to be consistent with the master plan. And I expressed concerns about the impact on our local community, specifically the flooding and traffic issues in the southwest quadrant. Those concerns are mentioned in the 2009 master plan and well-known to the town. But directly answering the question presented, in addition to those concerns, I really do feel like it's unlikely that one zoning change really is going to address the continuing obligation to provide that realistic opportunity for affordable housing. So it's not a once and done, it's a continuing obligation. And what we really need to do is we need a comprehensive reevaluation of the township, including traffic circulation, including those climate change vulnerabilities, and housing. And that's what you do in the master plan. And that's what we're initiating now. So I'm looking forward to the planning board initiating this process. And a well-qualified consultant leading an open and collaborative process with the community, with those environmental and housing chops, would be a tremendous asset to this community. And I think it would really help us to solve some of those concerns going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Tamboro.
Thank you. I believe the overlay zone does provide us an opportunity to not only make the downtown of Verona better, to create some green space, to address our parking concerns, to create residential areas, bring some anchor stores that can help all the other stores as well in that area. And it can help with the affordable housing piece as well. One thing that we must do as a town council to realize any of these goals is to work with the property owner on land between South Prospect and Montrose Avenue. And that is one of the biggest challenges that we're going to face. So the town is not taking possession of the property, right? We have to work with the individuals who own the property. We have to build that consensus. We have to demonstrate to them the value of their investment. And that's something that we need to do as a mayor at the council before we can do anything else. This is an opportunity for a lot of things, not just affordable housing, but to also deal with our parking issues and to make an attractive downtown as well. But it may not be enough. And the reality of it is, right now, it's kind of a guess at this point what our housing obligation is going to be. It puts us in a terrible position to plan for the future. And this goes back to the point that we need to be addressing the affordable housing mandates on a state level in order to come up with solutions. So every few years, we don't have to come back to the same situation we're in now, trying to find a new plan, a new solution to fit more units. Part of our master plan is engaging community values, and we must do that here.
Next question. The Verona Rescue Squad, Verona Fire Department, and most recently, the Verona Police Department are in desperate need of a new building or upgrades to accommodate their respective members, officers, and equipment. There are multiple safety space issues with each department's current space. In light of the recent ongoing affordable housing litigation and need to fulfill the requirements set forth by the state, this seems to have been put to the side for now. Even though the council and the candidates know this is a priority, especially for the Rescue Squad and Fire Department, what would be your plan to ensure that these projects are put at the top of the council's agenda? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. McAvoy, you're first.
Can you read the question again? No, I'm joking. Obviously, obviously, these three departments are equally important to the residents of Verona, and we depend daily on their unequaled services. I sat down with the Rescue Squad after the petition a couple of years ago impeded the purchase of 56 Grove Avenue for their future use. And we reviewed several options, from repairing their current building to purchasing property in a new location and estimating the building costs. I have seen the condition of Firehouse 2. I'll tell you, it's untenable. And finally, the Police Department, it's too small and extremely outdated. From their office space to their locker room facilities, from their jail area to their bathrooms. So any plan that we have would be entirely contingent on our finances and our ability to carry more debt. So right now, we have approximately, I think, $44 million in debt because of the purchase and the acquisition of land over the last couple of years. So in order to meet the needs of the Rescue Squad, the Firehouse, it would probably run, I would say, about eight or nine million dollars. Add to that the Police Department, and we're several million more. So as a note, this is the only one part of our infrastructural problems. We need to contend with our utility infrastructure also. So therefore, we need to do a full-scale breakdown of how bonding for such funds would carry into our future debt service. Also factoring in when other bonds are paid off, when they come off the board, then we can add new ones on. And we must complete a thorough financial risk assessment for the entire town. But yes, I am a proponent of
That's your time, Mr. McAvoy.
... these major projects in the next couple of years.
Mr. McAvoy. Mr. Heinmann.
Thank you. And just to touch on what Mayor McAvoy said, he brought up a great point about the fact that we are limited in our ability to take care of our first responders because of poor decisions that were made regarding affordable housing compliance. The fact that we had to pay a bond for $18 million to comply with our affordable housing plan is putting real strains on the community beyond just housing. So with respect to planning and preparing for the necessary improvements, part of the master plan process addresses this concern. There's a facilities review element. The 2009 plan basically just listed the inventory and the last renovations and how many people use the facilities. The new plan has to do more than that. It needs to provide a comprehensive audit. It needs to project the remaining useful life of the facility in the present condition. It needs to prioritize the replacement and renovation of the facilities. And if necessary, it needs to identify properties for acquisition to facilitate replacement or renovation, whether temporary or permanent. That way, when opportunities arise, the council and the administration is prepared to move and acquire those properties. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Holland.
I want to start by recognizing that the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic really highlights the importance of these three essential services. The Verona Police Department headquarters, I was honored that they gave me a tour the other week, and it is undeniably small and cramped. And it's a credit to them for making do. But we must make it a priority to ensure that they have adequate facilities to enable them to do their job. For the Verona Fire Department and the Rescue Squad, it's important to note that these are volunteer organizations with incredibly dedicated individuals that by volunteering their services are saving Verona residents a tremendous amount of money. And supporting them, as a result, is in all of our interests. It is in the whole community's interest, just as collaborating with our schools serves the whole community. So ultimately, the property needs for these departments are going to be really unique. So no one's going to be able to promise that we can quickly address them. There's opportunities through the master plan, and it is going to be costly to provide that. But having the commitment to keep this as a top priority means that we keep it on the agenda and that we can insist on having regular updates from the departments and the township manager about the progress on this issue. Thank you.
Mr. Tamboro.
Well, as a member of the Verona Rescue Squad for the past 12 years, I can tell you that I have fallen in love with the 1970s paneling. And we just got some insulation in the attic of the building. So I really don't want to give this up, but it is time for new facilities. I thank Mayor McAvoy for taking an active role in helping to make that happen. We have an ambulance that can only fit into one of the three bays in our building, because the Rescue Squad building was originally a blacksmith shop that was added on to. In Firehouse 2, we have a building that is becoming dilapidated that houses an incredibly expensive piece of equipment in our town's only ladder truck. Our Police Department is advancing technologically and with personnel, and we have a facility that is obsolete. So we need to get this done quickly. This is becoming a safety issue. It's becoming an issue for our insurance provider, for workers' compensation issues. And it's something that we need to really take care of for all of our first responders and for the individuals who serve. The biggest issue here is finding land. And we can plan for that. And we can also really need to be aggressive about noting land that is up for sale and really pouncing on it very quickly. We have to make some very split-second decisions after analyzing and studying what is happening and potentially build some facilities that we can share some land and work together on that and repurpose the existing spaces we have. So, thank you.
Mr. Knokkumson.
Thank you. Clearly, our first responders are incredibly important to everyone in our township. Our police, our fire and rescue. And getting them the best equipment and the best facilities is, should be, a priority at all times. Regardless of what our obligations are to affordable housing, we have to multitask and be able to do various things at once. I know when I was on the council, we were looking for land for the Rescue Squad at 56 Grove Ave. Unfortunately, that fell through, and we were looking for land for Firehouse 2. Common sense suggestion would be if we can identify a large enough parcel of land where we can build a facility that could house Firehouse 2 and the Rescue Squad, where they're under one roof but completely separate, so they have autonomy like they have now, would make a lot of sense. So that is logical, and thank goodness, we have two parcels of land that we could sell to help us on the down payment of this facility. But I think you need someone with some business acumen, with the ability to understand solving problems, finding solutions, and supporting our first responders. And we would talk with Chief Kiernan. I think the police certainly deserve upgrades. They may be secondary to the situation with the Firehouse and Rescue Squad, but without a doubt, they're all priorities and they protect and serve our community. And that's critically important. Thank you.
Okay, terrific. We might go four or five minutes over, but if it's okay with everyone, we're going to ask one final question. There are many divisive issues for all of us to contend with these days. Can you provide an example of how you acted on behalf of the body that you represent, even if it conflicted with your own views? Can you provide an example of how you reached across the aisle to others and found common ground to address an issue? Going first will be Mr. Heinmann.
Thank you. So as a litigation attorney, finding common ground with adversaries in order to move settlements and deals and even litigation forward in an orderly fashion, it's a job requirement. I also have to advocate and defend policy decisions and ordinances that I personally disagree with. So acting professionally and serving the best interests of a client, it's just par for the course. As a member of the planning board and the Montclair Historic Preservation Commission, I often have to mediate between more passionate members, especially in the historic preservation context, and remind them of the legal and statutory limitations and respect for the rights of private property owners, while still trying to advocate to advance the core mission of the commission, which is to preserve historic structures and resources for future generations. So those are just some areas where I often have to operate in a professional and collegial environment, even where there are significant differences of opinion.
Ms. Holland.
I began my career working to develop the state's renewable energy market. And that was a process that we continued through the Great Recession as an economic driver, offering very generous financial incentives, some of which advantaged the township of Verona. After a change of administration in 2010 at the state, the focus shifted to filling holes in the state budget, and I had to pivot. So we scaled back the economic incentive programs that I had worked to build. We reduced funding while ensuring the continued integrity of the programs. I also had to defend the legal basis for redirecting funds away from the clean energy programs I had worked to build. That appellate division decision is published, and ultimately, I believe that we struck the right balance by ensuring the continuity of the programs, albeit at a smaller scale, while we also enabled the new administration to take their promised budget action and achieve their policy objectives. And I think I can do and find similar fair results here in Verona. And so I think that my experience working on both sides of the aisle is a tremendous asset, and I think that I can bring that to the Verona Township Council. Thank you.
Mr. Tamboro.
Thank you. So I work as a labor negotiator and as a representative for public employee unions. One of the most difficult things we do, divisive things we do, is one of the most important, and that's collective bargaining. It's coming to contract settlements, and these can be emotional, they can be difficult. However, I've never had, in my time negotiating for the last five years, an agreement that had to go to state-level mediation or otherwise get a third party involved, one that I was representing as a consultant. This was through working with the attorneys for the governing body, speaking to members directly, making negotiations not about people but about the issues before, finding those common interests and coming up with really good solutions that were beneficial to both sides. As a creative mediator through Drew University, I have been able to mediate through interpersonal disputes and on larger scales in order to find that common ground that makes us more successful in the end. It is building relationships that's really important and being able to represent the people you work with. As consultants, I don't get a vote on the contract. I have to represent the interests of the people that I am paid to be there for. The same thing, as you're representative, I can fairly and work with other individuals in order to represent your needs, in order to come up with solutions that will be beneficial for everybody to avoid future problems. Thank you.
Mr. Knokkumson.
Thank you. Well, I think having the right attitude, and it's an attitude of partnership, it's an attitude that you may not have a solution, but you can always improve a situation. And I think that's the attitude you have to bring to the table, that cooperating, communicating, and collaborating is what gets you to that goal. And as long as you have everyone in the room that has a similar goal, and that would be with the Rescue Squad, with the police station, with the Firehouse, getting these first responders getting these first responders to a new location that will suit them, then you can work through it. And money doesn't become an obstacle when you have the same goals in mind. So to me, the strength and the quality of relationships are critical, but you have to have the ability and the characteristic to be flexible and adapt in order to get to that improved situation. Because solutions aren't always the case, but you can definitely improve a situation. So thank you very much.
Mr. McAvoy.
Since this is a town council interview, I'm going to say, I want to stick to the council and say, I don't believe there is an so aisle on the council. I don't think there's any reach across the aisle that has to be done because we are a nonpartisan town. And we are all here and doing this because we love Verona and we want to do the right thing for Verona. I would say, generally speaking, I have and remain open-minded to all perspective and points of view. Having served on the council, the planning board, multiple committees and commissions, I have found that all the members and volunteers of these boards and committees have had invaluable and valid input. Input that has at times moved the needle. But to my mind, there hasn't been any controversial disagreements. I would say, when the council disagrees with portions of an ordinance or a resolution, we air our grievances out at a meeting. And in many cases, we agree as a group to alter whatever proposals or reintroduce as a group. And for example, I always bring up the rent control ordinance. The first draft we had last year was objected by the majority of the council and as well as by several of the residents who were directly impacted by it. So the council and the manager worked to change the ordinance until we found unanimous support. We also reintroduced a couple of years ago the tree ordinance after council members found some directives too strict. So even though, you know, I was in favor of the original draft, I was happy to see that the new draft addressed and the concerns were changed upon reintroduction. So again,
That's your time, Mr. McAvoy.
And here to others.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll go to our closings, and we will do these in alphabetical order, beginning with you, Ms. Holland.
Thank you. This has been great, and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with everyone. So first, I really have to say thank you to the engaged community members who submitted some truly thought-provoking questions that really challenged us all to give you our honest answers so that you can have an informed decision in your, on your ballot on May 11th. I want to say thank you to my fellow candidates. I'm grateful for the gentlemanly conduct that I have observed during this election process, and I really very much appreciate it. I want to say thank you to the juniors and thank you to the League of Women Voters for really moderating this event and for hosting us here this evening. I hope that voters take away this evening that I'm a dedicated and committed individual. I can't stop myself when I throw myself into something. I'm fully and entirely committed to it. I have a great depth of experience in state government, having worked for both the Board of Public Utilities, the Division of Law and Public Safety, and really done a tremendous amount of work with the Department of Environmental Protection. I've served under three governors, and I have been a part of some of the statewide strategic planning that is ultimately informing local government decisions. I'm very excited to take that experience leadership and benefit Verona by helping us plan for the future and take more sustainable action. And I very much want to be a part of our stronger community resilience coming out of COVID that's enhancing social and both economic growth opportunities for our community so that we can come back together after over a year of socially-distanced time apart. See me at hollandforverona.com, and please vote line 1A on May 11th. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Heineman.
Thank you to the Verona juniors and the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum and to my fellow candidates. I'm excited and ready to serve as your next councilperson. As you heard, I'm a municipal attorney that deals with zoning, state-mandated affordable housing compliance, and the redevelopment issues that local governments face. I also have to defend municipalities in court over these very issues. My expertise is actually battle-tested on a regular basis, and I know the full toolkit that's available for Verona to satisfy its affordable housing beyond just the inclusionary overlay zones. Frankly, I think some of the other candidates are severely misunderstanding the scope of this challenge. And while I agree with the idea to develop Bloomfield Ave, I don't need to talk about it much because it's really the low-hanging fruit in this discussion and this comprehensive master plan approach. Market rate conversions to affordable units are an element of my toolkit, but it can't be the only solution because it will only exacerbate the development pressure that fuels builders' remedies. It's also expensive to implement on an exclusive basis. For Verona, it probably costs between $5 million and $9 million. We have to be realistic about our options and proactive. My expertise on the council means stronger advocacy for the alternatives to high-density redevelopment deals negotiated in executive sessions and without public input, much like what happened with Spectrum and the Camco deals. It means safer roads that are easier to walk, run, bike, because we proactively planned for all types of mobility in our street design. It means stronger local businesses and an invigorated downtown because we prioritize customer access and convenience over marketing gimmicks. I'm grateful for the opportunity to share what I can bring to the council. Please visit jasonforverona.com to see my full platform and social channels. I hope you'll vote for me for one of the three council seats and consider joining my campaign and helping to share my message with your friends and neighbors on and offline. Remind them to vote on May 11th because every voice matters and every vote counts.
Mr. McAvoy.
I want to just note that when I talked earlier about challenge to the builder's remedy, I want to just point out that I meant that because we're such a small town, small towns should not be considered the same as other larger towns. And they do. That's the problem with fair share housing. The other problem I wanted to just make a note of is that when I talked about we had to purchase $18 million of land, the other thing fair share doesn't worry about when you have to build this housing in high density, they don't care about your infrastructure, your police, and all your other things that go to the town and all that. But one of my main goals in Verona was to address our environment and our need for ordinances when I got elected that would seek to protect it, our health, and longer term, our infrastructure, which, to repeat, are all in great need of repair and replacement. Our infrastructure can't properly support our town, doesn't exist today. And we're talking about our utility infrastructure, like our stormwater system and our utility water system, as well as our building infrastructure, as we mentioned, police, fire, and rescue squad. Verona is over 98% developed, and that was as of 2009, and has an ample supply and range of housing. Though our affordable housing mandate and other private proposals in Verona will likely see between 400 and 500 more housing units in coming years, most of which would exist along the avenue where I feel multifamily and mixed-use development belongs. Verona has a winning formula, and it's why people move here. It starts with our residents, then the charm of our houses and our neighborhoods. Big finish, our schools. I want to maintain the tree-lined character of our residential streetscapes without any more pavement and additional traffic. With help from both the council and the Chamber of Commerce, I want our town center and the business community to gain strength and flourish. I'm glad to speak tonight, and please vote for me on May 11th, line 4A. Thank you.
Mr. Knokkumson.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to be part of this forum. And I just wanted to say, on behalf of my wife and I, we are investors in this town. We bought a home 20 years ago. We are personally invested in the community. We are financially invested, and I have a real vision for Verona. And the downtown is not a gimmick. The downtown is real. The downtown is optics. The downtown brings in money. It attracts bodies. It attracts revenues, and we can do it. I have a plan that not only embraces our history, but will enhance our charm. And that is critical. Because when you walk and roll Verona and you eat Verona and you live Verona, that's important. We are talking about an activation plan that will bring movie nights, concert nights, and art nights to the downtown and the town square. We are going to light the town square up with subtle LED lighting. So when people pass through, they realize this is a special town. This is a unique town. Maybe I'll open a business in this town, or maybe I'll open an office in this town. But when you make an investment in a town, others then follow. And the township needs to be that investor, and the businesses will appreciate it, the anchor business will appreciate it. So we really have to embrace our history and the tradition of the single-family home. It's 65% of this town, and that's why most of us work, move here. Enjoy that. We enjoy our neighborhood schools. We enjoy the homes that basically cuddle the schools in the four quadrants of the town. We also understand the history of this town and some of the people who came before us. William "Bucky" Hatchett, Anthony Fazano, Carlo Calibri. These are people who have put Verona on the map, and we need to basically give back to Verona and make this a special place to do business, a special place to live, and a special place to educate our students. So we can do it all at once.
Thank you, Mr. Knokkumson.
Vote 5A on May 11th, Knokkumson.
Mr. Tamboro.
Thank you to our organizers and the League of Women Voters tonight. As an educator, I'm thrilled to see so many people sign on tonight. As somebody who cares about the community, I'm even more pleased. I have a love for this town, the people, the community, our opportunities, and even the challenges we face. We can use our strengths to address our challenges. We can join together in strategic planning and engagement that involves hundreds of members of the community. We can keep the spirit of this forum going. The question should not end tonight. Whether you own a single-family home, or you rent, or you live in a condominium or a high-rise, you are a member of the Verona community, and your opinion is valued. I ask for one of your three votes for Township Council so that I can be your representative, your advocate, a resource, a researcher, a listener, a steward for your tax dollars, and most importantly, a consensus builder. Because the decisions aren't being made tonight, they're being made over the next four years. We need to be able to meet the goals of unity, bringing people together, supporting emergency services. Prosperity, improving our business district, and looking at all the fees and such that we pay. We need to bring accountability. We need to make plans and then hold government to them with specific outcomes. Bring transparency to Verona. Tonight, we couldn't discuss all of the issues that face Verona. I strongly encourage you to visit my website, tamboroforcouncil.com, to look at my platform and position statements. Please attend an event, a Friday Policy Hour at my home, a coffee with a candidate. But most importantly, please ask and reach out if you have any questions so that your vote on May 11th can be informed. And for Chris Tamboro, line 3A. Thank you.
Thank you all for attending our Town Council Candidates Forum. I hope that the members of the public have found this forum to be informative and will help them to make decisions at the upcoming town council election. A recording of this forum will be posted on our website at www VeronaJuniors.org following the event. I would like to thank all of the candidates for their participation tonight. And thank you again to our moderator, Kathy Kazan, to Donna Ward, our timekeeper, and the League of Women Voters of Montclair for their participation this evening, as well as their help and time in the weeks leading up to the event.
Okay. Thank you to the candidates and the community and to everyone who attended this evening. Thank you to the Junior Women's Club of Verona for sponsoring this forum and to you, Madam President. It was a pleasure working with you. I would also like to thank Donna from the Montclair Area League for keeping time this evening. And finally, thank you to the township for the technical support. Election Day is Tuesday, May 11th. Polls are open from 6:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. There are 11 districts with polls in five locations. See your sample ballot for the specific location. You also have the option of using the ballot box provided in your town for vote-by-mail ballots. It will be open until the close of polls on Election Day. Deadline for in-person submission of completed mail-in ballots is 8:00 p.m. Election Day, May 11th. Vote-by-mail application deadline to be received at the county clerk's office is May 3rd. Vote-by-mail application request deadline in person at the county clerk's office is up until 3:00 p.m. on the day before election, May 10th. Applications are available at your local clerk's office or online at the Essex County Clerk's Office website. For more information, visit your local Verona County Clerk's webpage, the Essex County Clerk's Office, the State of New Jersey Division of Elections, or the league at l w v n j.org. You have all had a great opportunity this evening to meet your candidates and to help you make an informed decision. Please apply for your vote-by-mail ballot or show up at the polls. Most importantly, vote. Thank you and good night.